I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brendel?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Tangman?
Here.
Mr. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Zellman?
Here.
Mr. Martin absent, Ms. Lojci absent. Chairman Pierceall?
Here. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the opening public meeting law. Notice of this meeting was included in a list of meetings sent to the co-star of the Asbury Park Press. It was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and it's also on our website. Each applicant, say exclusively, is limited to 15 minutes and present your case as our resolution 10 dash 2007.
Chairman, if I could just make an announcement before we take a motion on the minutes. On the minutes of July 28th, right at the top I have a note that was called for order by Chairman Pierceall, which is incorrect. Mr. Pierceall wasn't at the meeting. It was called for order by Mr. Brendel. I did note it underneath your note all that Mr. Brendel desired as the chairman, but that's what happens when we do a cut and paste from previous minutes. So I'm just going to the minutes.
Brian, you weren't consulted on.
No. So I just want to make that change to the minutes.
If there was anyone other than Janine. With that notation, can we have a motion on it?
Take a motion, we accept the minutes with the rotation.
Mr. Brendel?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Absent.
Mr. Tangman?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Zellman?
Yes.
And Chairman Pierceall?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I just wanted to mention something I did with the last meeting. I had attended one of the council meetings and discussed in the voice of the public set a note them that they had a plan that the borough engineer had developed about a year or two ago that would prioritize where the borough felt that sidewalks were most appropriate to be put in. Certain places being very necessary, other places being not so necessary. Joe May, the borough engineer, said, yes, he did have such a plan developed and he believed that the council had approved it a while ago. So I guess that he'd give it to the board since we don't have it and for the people who should use it. And he said that he would then give Janine a copy of that plan. So Janine, have you received a copy of that?
I have received a copy of it, but it officially was never approved by mayor and council. They had taken a look at it, made some recommendations and some changes that Joe May, as the engineer, had done, was resubmitted back to mayor and council, but never carried any further. Joe never heard any comments that, yes, this is what we want to do. No further discussion as far as Mr. May was concerned by mayor and council because he never was directed one way or the other that this in fact was the way that the council wanted to go. So it's kind of at a standstill.
Give me other thoughts about that, then?
No, I just wanted to let the board know what has gone on with that. Because they did say they would give us a plan, and the plan is obviously not completely...
There is no plan.
Good point.
Thank you. Thank you, Janine. So there is no correspondence, although Janine has given us a New Jersey planner for your perusal. Our old business is application Z 2016 dash 03. Would like a motion on that. And then, oh wait, excuse me, in big red print it says that that application has been withdrawn.
The A-10 by recent, if you want. That's correct.
Okay. My, I wasn't here, honestly.
No, you were. Why? That's, you're gone.
I am.
You're good.
Which brings us to our new business and its application, Z 2016 dash 06. James, is it Dugan or Dugan?
Dugan.
Dugan.
Okay.
I want to wish you luck tonight, Mr. Dugan, and I want to wish Mr. Damianno luck in his presentation and, you know, we'll see what we can do for you.
My son Billy is here as well, and I have several contact or address, Tom, too.
Yeah, you little gentleman.
Why don't you guys step up here?
We'll swear all of you back to anyone that's trying to say something tonight. We'll be swearing in along with our engineer.
We're both very common. We all make contact.
All right, and your contractor?
Just a...
Okay, just a case. So just, you know who Mr. La Bosco is, but if, left to right, if you just state your name and address, I mean, we'll swear you in, okay?
I'm right.
James Dugan, 571 Walnut Street, Washington County, New Jersey.
William Dugan? 35 Hudson Street, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Don Finn, 90 North St. Martin Lane, Wall Street.
Paul Damianno, 1721 Beverly Avenue, Spring Lake Heights.
Gentlemen, if you'd each raise your right hand in front of Mr. Bosco to swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and end of the due to tonight's proceeding.
I do.
Thank you. Are you, do you want to start as well?
Why don't I start it off? I mean, I'll just go ahead and start it off. So we are looking at actually 623 Central Avenue, which is an existing single-family residence in a D2 zone.
Mr. Damianno, just so we get on the record, your profession and just very briefly, your...
I've been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for 23 years, a resident of Spring Lake Heights for about the same amount of time. Been in business in Spring Lake Heights since 1998 as a practicing architect and I've done many residential commercial structures throughout New Jersey and appeared in front of many boards and was...
Sitting in this one.
I've been in front of this before.
On your one of my... Thank you.
So the reason we're here is that we are looking to put an addition on a residence that is in a D2 zone. So that residence is at 623 Central Avenue, which I'll point out on this aerial photo is right here. So it's the first lot in behind a Herman Liquor store. So this is a picture of the existing front of the house and its neighbor to the east, which is a residential, you know, residential house. This is a picture through looking at the existing driveway that leads to the back. This is a picture of the yard where the addition is proposed to be looking back at Herman Liquors. So you can see how screened it is. And this is an addition from the yard looking back at the house. You can see that there's some depth there to the house. This is a photograph, I guess we should mark this because this is an exhibit. This is a photograph looking west on Central Avenue, trying to show, you know, that's the subject home. There's houses across the street, so it does feel like a residential neighborhood while you're back there. This is a view from 71. A1, photo board. Effort just for description purposes, it's a... Residence, and that is always been a residence. The Dugans purchased...
She purchased the... She purchased that...
Do you use a...
It's my favorite. We bought it. We put new windows in. We signed it. We put new air... For funerals, weddings, parties, whatever. So let's see, I'm looking forward to having a combination that is better suited for us for my underbooks here.
And I'll just continue with that and say, all right, so this is the existing house plan right now. Before you get, we're gonna, these are as submitted. So this is A2, the plan that was submitted.
Okay, very good.
So we have A1, A2, and A3, just colored versions of what was already submitted of the... The picture board. So there is really, there's an existing family room in the front. There's a covered porch. There's an existing living room. There is a dining area. And there's a kitchen that has the laundry right now and there's a pump out with a powder room. So the idea is to take off this one-story powder room, get the laundry out of the kitchen to have a laundry, a bathroom, and a master bedroom with a stair up that has, you know, basically a bunk room for the grandkids and then they have a bathroom upstairs. So it's really adding two bedrooms. We're adding a bedroom upstairs. We're adding a bedroom downstairs. Moving laundry, adding bathroom, having a powder room for easier access off the master. And the idea is to renovate the kitchen and to basically just try to match the, the required extent, extend the house. So looking at the elevation, this is of course, of course, the back of the house. Trying to have something that sort of tees off in the back. That's a view from inside. This is what you would see. The liquor store, kind of walking in from the driveway. There was some discussion about are we, are in whose letter? What was being proposed in terms of, I think in terms of the sidewalk? They were pulling up the patio in the rear and just replacing the patio. And then if the existing curb cut was intended to stay, but the parking being wider at the building line to get maybe two cars across so they don't have to keep backing out because people do sort of tend to take up spaces in the front. Now, there are non-conformities with the existing structure being, you know, four feet off the front of the... Four and a half feet off the side yard, which is conforming to a commercial structure. It would need to be 20 feet off the side yard to... Our thinking was... 10 feet, but I would... The house is next to a commercial building, so we don't think it hurts.
Lot on that lot.
So if I put a... And then this is their lot, and then there is their actual neighbor's lot is also...
Well, there's something that I noticed on Lou's chart and maybe either Lou or you could explain it.
10 and 3 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so... The B2 lot is 820, so 600 square foot lot where 50 required for a D2. It's 80 feet, 80 feet wide as opposed to 100, which would be required. It has a lot depth, actually a 120 with the B2 lot. The front yard setback, existing required is, would be 30. We are, anything new is well past 30. We're at 45.1. Any new structure, we talked about the side yard and the rear yard. The requirement for the side and the rear is 10 feet. We have both of those with the residential structure. And I would say residential uses are only on the second floor. So really it's the, you know, they're looking to have, or the, you know, the zone re- that you need to have a business use on the first floor and residential is permitted on the second. Or as an any piece of property, they bought it as a residential piece of... They're looking to continue that use as a residential property to make it more comfortable for themselves. There's certainly a very large buffer between them and the neighbors where it doesn't seem to affect really anybody down the street. You get the feeling that you aren't in the middle of commercial there. They feel like their residential is consistent with the neighbors in terms of what's there.
May I ask?
Yeah, please.
Sure. So with respect to the yard, one of the things that I enjoy using the house for as a... Nephews and... And even with... Whole piece of yard as well as the bathroom. So I feel like the addition really doesn't infringe on the...
You're going to use a tree in your...
Love it.
You love it.
We have, I think the tree is going to most likely go down, but we have an owner who planted it a couple of years ago because we didn't have it removed and covers actually... That life left in it. So my brother, my younger brother and I were the tree hunters and we felt like we had a small victory in keeping the tree. So we'll keep it as long as the arborist says it has to go unless it infringes on the ability to construct.
But as of now, with what Mr. Damianno has drawn for you, it can stay?
It, I believe the addition fits, but it's...
The addition clears it, but we're not sure, you know, we can't say that...
The new addition, we have to overdate for the foundation and until we do that, I can't reach, what impact I have on the roof system, so...
Is there a basement foundation or...
Just a...
So the overdate is exactly...
Exactly.
And if it would happen to come down, would you consider planting, you know, something in the lot, that side lot, you know, blood lot or whatever, you know, to...
It's a silver maple. It's a Chinese. It's like 120 years old. And, you know, from a common sense point of view, I don't think it would be right then to take it down. There are trees across the back separating us from the condos back there. But, you know, we have a big lot and replacing it with, you know, some other trees would be very appropriate. The existing, it says 4 foot on...
Porch, but the porch is covered.
Yeah, no, the porch is covered. It's covered now. There's no change. That's what was noticed, but there's a dimension of 12 feet that that 12 feet goes to the house, not the porch.
Yeah, but there's another dimension on the plan that says 4 feet on.
So the porch right now exists, is already closed. It's 4 foot from the...
Street.
Yes.
Or is it the steps that are 4 feet from the street?
No, no, it's the porch.
It's 4 feet on the proper line.
Right, so that's about 14 feet from the road.
This existing front yard... Four corners with the drain at the... You feel like... The additional... D zone. But if the, if the boards these fit, we could put a drainage, you know, a drainage drywall to handle the root offsets. Remember I went to, well, the finances shouldn't commit to it, so... But I had, now I started saying it, I had come to one meeting where everybody required a lady whose house burned down. They said, oh yeah, just put the drywall, you know, put the drywall. And it wound up being a $10,000 item for her. And somebody on the board said, oh my God, I didn't know we were requiring that when she wasn't really changing her coverage. I wish we hadn't, so... It is a financial factor, but, you know, we'd be happy.
Does that sound like excessive?
That was for, that was for a new, that was for a whole house. This might be four or five.
Well, that's in the house require 28 feet of 2-inch pipe?
About.
About, regardless of the size.
But drywall holes could be concrete.
Well, then you're really getting to money.
Then it gets to be expensive.
If this were residential, what would the coverage be allowed? Was the residential...
50%.
50% house?
For a single-family home.
House and...
House and driveway.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
Okay, so you're well underway even a residential lot?
Yes.
So do you think that lot, that roof without drywall or...
At 25%, the ordinance requires 50% or less, it probably can't. But I don't see any problem with putting a drywall in if it's an addition.
Just an addition, Mr.... Mr.
It's around the front of the property. Sounds a little strange, I think.
It's kind of like a. Like the.
Really have to, we had, with that. And three million to do so and people came from Beverly Avenue. Too close to the street and the mayor and council. Subsequently. New house built.
Can you see the picture in front of the house again?
Sure.
Have a foot to his house.
Well, well, that's a good point, like right. To the street. Like to get from the street, we do have the slate, the slate stepping stones to the front, but there's really no foot traffic going.
We're gonna have a voice to the public where you can, you know, state your thing in a little bit. It just doesn't seem like it's one of those like target streets.